This is Scottsboro Work Session, Tuesday, September 4th. Diversion of the city by Gary Stewart's political allegiance to the law.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings you've given us. We ask now that you'll watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your side. Please watch over the employees of Scottsboro and all citizens. Let them do, let them be well in their ways every day. Please, Lord, watch over the military, bring home safety to their families. God guide and direct us so that the enemy will all come to thee. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I was Jim O'Leary, City and Capital Projects Manager. Jim, please.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update status. Just a very brief intro, a couple of weeks ago, I was appointed by Mr. Stewart here to come see what I could do and find out about these projects that might be able to be of some assistance. My initial objective when I started this was to obtain some firm quotes on all four of these projects so that I could bring to you firm prices on all four so that you can make decisions. On the first one, we can do the price of all four. That's how I started that. I met with the department heads and advisory members of each of the projects so I could understand, better understand the scope of each of the four projects. On the Veterans Field, I met with Yvonne Yocel, Brian Donaldson, Sonia Hard, Mark Peppers, and Cindy Dryer. RecCom, Yvonne Yocel, Pam Stewart, John Reichen. On the Heritage Center, Judy Weaver, Susan Fisher, and Brenda Ivey. And on Fire Station, Jean Nicholas. I had follow-up meetings to see what design work may be able to be broken out as standalone and not require the services of an architect. Again, looking at all four projects. Additionally, I considered the option of the city acting as a general contractor on some of the projects in order to minimize cost and then to expedite the construction as well. Further meetings and research into both of these items resulted in this new information for me. Number one, state law requires that a licensed architect or an engineer, if applicable, to prepare plans for certain projects. Let me give you an example. The Heritage Center is classified as a place of ascended. That's where the public gathers. As such, an architect must prepare and stamp the plans. Another example is replacement of specialized HVAC indoor pool at the RecCom. Codes and equipment have significantly changed in the 20-plus years when this was initially put in. And requiring an architect to develop the necessary specifications to meet the code, to meet all those codes and then prepare those specifications. For projects that KPS or any architect does, prepares the plans for, they are required to follow through with the construction oversight of the prime contractor. So, leading that as an introduction, this is the plan that I'm proposing to the city council. On the Veterans Field, we've already had the meetings with the task team I just mentioned to further identify and review drawings and identify scope. Next, we meet with KPS to go over the items from the task team meetings and establish final scope and selected items that may be handled separately by the city. We would meet with the previously established project committee, the mayor, Yvonne Yocel, and Gary Stewart from the Veterans Field, to finalize project scope and responsibilities. The city council then would approve the total project scope. Then KPS would complete all the drawings, specifications, solicit bids, obtain council approval, award contracts, and oversee the construction. The city obtains quotes, solicit bids for selected items outside the KPS contractor. For example, the lighting. And there may be others. It would obtain, of course, council approval and manage those contracts, again, outside the KPS contractor. For the RecCom, the meetings were held with the task team, as I previously mentioned, to review various scope items and identify all the scope. The meet with KPS to determine which scope items can be contracted and managed outside the scope of KPS. We would meet with the project committee, the mayor, Yvonne Yocel, and Brent Miller for the RecCom, which was previously established, to finalize the project scope. The city council then would approve the project scope. KPS would complete the drawings and specifications for their scope of work, solicit bids, obtain council approval, and oversee the construction contract. The city would obtain quotes, solicit bids for work outside the KPS contract, obtain council approval, and manage those contracts. For the Heritage Center, the meetings, again, were previously identified, meeting with the task team to identify scope items. Next, we meet with KPS to determine which scope items can be contracted and managed outside the KPS scope of work. For example, cabinet work is a good example of that. It would not require the services of an architect. We meet with the project committee, the mayor, Keith Smith, and the Heritage Center representatives to finalize project scope. KPS would prepare the required design documents, solicit bids, obtain council approval, and oversee the construction contract. The city would obtain quotes, solicit bids for the work outside the KPS contract, and obtain council approval and manage those contracts. For Fire Station number three, again, the task team met and identified the work scope items for Fire Station number three. We'd meet with the project committee, the mayor, Toby Mullinsford, and Jean Nicholas, to review the work packages and finalize the project scope. City council would approve the planned project scope. The city would obtain quotes, solicit bids for work, obtain council approval, and manage contracts. And work would be reported to the council. Fire Station number three is such that it is modifications and alterations to the interior of the building, not requiring the services of KPS or an architect. Where the city, I mentioned several places, the city obtains quotes, solicit bids, etc. I'd be willing to volunteer my time to assist in that effort along those lines. And that's a summarization of our proposal.
Any questions for Jim?
I'd just like to say that, Jim, I appreciate you contributing in your way to these programs. Definitely get a plan.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to do so, and I think I can add some value throughout this process. How, what would you like for me to add?
May I ask? It's my understanding, you're saying for them to do everything they're required to do.
Yes.
Up to and through finishing, it's like that. And that what, what isn't required by law has, we don't know what all that is right now. You know, to do the Reds.
Yes. Along with the task team, you know what I mean?
I'll work with the task. I guess the biggest question I've got is in four projects. One is better than, especially big projects like Law Field, the Rec Center. There's gonna be differences of opinion on things. And in, for such a minute part, that the cabinets and this and that, why? Separate that out, just the small things. Well, we have two different people who try to have to go to it and figure out which one did what and all this stuff. And who's gonna, who's gonna decide which one? If there is conflict, then there has to be conflict with this many things going on. And I guess, I just don't understand why, what's wrong with the way we were starting it? Because a lot of these problems are only common. And we've never really gone into it, but, but they haven't told us yet. All we did was talk about money and that, and then all, and then everything's in. Basically, it's just happened to me. But I guess, that's what I, mostly what I'm worried about is economy. Because the border cornered, and I honestly don't think we have the money to do all four of them to the extent that we want them done, or some of them want them done. I just wonder who's gonna settle all that?
Well, I, several places in here, the process would be that the task team that's been working on these scope items, they, first of all, identify what items that they think might be able to be broken out. The next meeting would be with KPS representative and with the council committee project person at that same time. We can combine meetings, but at that time, the responsibility, okay, cabinets, that's outside. Lighting, that's outside. Those items would be identified and written down. And so, responsibility for those, KPS would have no responsibility for the installation and purchase of lighting, would have no responsibility at all for the cabinets. And if something did come up, the council has these committees in place that they would, and of course, the council is a whole, necessary. But I would not anticipate any conflicts because the roles and the items are clearly delineated, who does what. The savings are, you know, there's architects being, it would be, any item that's not included in the architect's contract, you're gonna save, the architect's being, and you'll save the general contractor's fee. So, it may or may not be much, depending on how much the items are. But anything that could be saved, I thought, would certainly be worth the effort. I do want to put that in.
And I heard you say that the state's gonna be the general contractor. And is there a rule of anybody in the city that has a general contractor's lawsuit?
No, we're not, we're not doing that now. No, that's how I said it, well, yeah, I maybe didn't make that clear if you, uh... Contractors required for plans they prepare, they have to be the construction oversight.
So, who would be responsible with what you do, those things?
The committee, the council committee. Or the mayor. I mean, however you want me to report to it, but, you know, the task team. Again, it's a collaborative effort, it's not me going out and doing something. I mean, we have task teams, that's what I call them, representatives of the department heads. I think the Recreation Advisory Council, and I'm not sure of the position or title that John Reichen has, but he's on one of these to be. But it won't be made in a vacuum, and everything that will be done, or is proposed to be done by the city, will be brought to the council for approval first. So that they say, yes, you guys can handle this? Okay, yes, doesn't happen. So, we won't be going out separately, getting official quotes. We have gotten some budget quotes to start, because we've started this process. Stop all of that, wait till we get the council approval. This is a screw responsibility.
It's my understanding that what they do will be done by an architect or contractor.
The prime contractor is, if something goes badly, we can go to the bank.
But you're saying if something goes badly on the lighting or whatever it is you're talking about, then we can go to the sale, because we think that we...
Well, I take it it's by your responsibility to make sure it does go right, and then if problems arise, then meet with the appropriate council representatives to resolve it. It's, I think it's a work, it's a chance worth taking. I mean, it's a minimal risk, but these are not big items that I'm proposing with the city undertake.
And again, that's what I was saying, I don't understand, how to separate that, these little items.
Hey, Jim, the meetings that you've had recently have both been successful. And as far as the meetings that we've had with Christine, I think we've had two to three meetings on these projects. Would you say overall that those have been successful?
I think they have been.
And I think also, Christine, we met earlier today about some of the numbers specifically. I think you're gonna discuss on those. But I think why it's important that we have this new system of, Jim, helping us look at this is, we're looking at roughly $2.1 million on this Ball Field, and we're down to 1.4 and a change. So, I think that's why I'm doing it. Any other questions? Thank you. Christine?
Thank you, I was asked to give an update on our efforts since the last time that I was in front of the council. And we've met with Mr. Stewart and Mr. Miller and the committee, and we've identified nearly $300,000 to $400,000 worth of items that we can consider taking out of the project. One of the things that we've explained to several folks is that we're gonna have to, as a group, collaborate and decide what are the things that are absolutely needed versus what are the things that they want. And it's still gonna be a much better facility than what we had out there, so we're not talking about any compromise, we're just talking about some things that could be more than described at this point. And I also wanted to reiterate that, you know, this project has not been bid. It's really just budget numbers that we've been talking about. Nothing's been bid, and the other projects haven't been bid on in terms of budget numbers as well. So, I'm happy to answer your questions.
What's the current number that you had presented earlier today on Ball Field?
Earlier today, it's about 1.4. That included some of our provided lighting and irrigation outside.
Approximately 300,000. So, the last number that we were presenting was 1.7.
That's correct.
But that did not include the lighting or the irrigation, the 1.7 number.
That's correct.
So, if we add that back in, we're up to 2 million. And so, now we've gotten back down to 1.47.
That's correct.
I think that's why these meetings have been very successful, because we've been able to cut out over $500,000 on just this one specific project.
When you came in that night, and we asked you how much money this project funded you, and you, I believe that's been 1.75. You didn't just pull that number out of the air? Were you not asked to do this project with those items at due price as a part of the project? I mean, you didn't just have them do it?
Yeah, no.
You were instructed to do it.
That's correct.
So, it's not like your responsibility or your fault that it went to 1.7, that was just what you were supposed to do.
Correct. That's correct.
So, if we took anything out, had it not been there to start with, the price wouldn't have been there to start with either.
The original budget that we were working with had several things that changed in the scope of the project to take it to that number.
Will those changes be, any door running out in the concession stand in your opinion, as far as what was in there?
Well, you know, one thing that we weren't aware of was the remote controls to the lighting. That was something that the project was designed for the power board to install, the wire and everything for the current light that is wired. We weren't aware of the controls, that was something that was in addition to what we had planned on for lighting. In addition, a full-service kitchen that includes a commercial dishwasher and a fryer and exhaust hood and a grease trap and all the things associated with that. So, those are some things that we're gonna have to really study. We recommend that those are ones that we need to look at, the facility, and absolutely what it means to be a facility that works to the needs that you have.
Any other questions for Christine? Thank you, thank you. Number two, discuss the resolution concerning employee state retirement. Mayor?
Do you have in your packet a resolution that I could consider? That would be to support the efforts of the retirement system of Alabama to continue managing the employee retirement funds. I don't know if you've heard a lot, there's been some talk in the legislature about going outside the retirement systems of Alabama to let someone else outside entities, even people outside the state, to manage the retirement fund. This is a resolution to the legislative branch asking, supporting the retirement systems of Alabama to continue to do what they've done for the last several decades. Lynn Cisco and Connie Parner, you're coming out of, probably a month ago, they set up a meeting at the city center that probably drew 400 people from all over North Alabama, like mostly employees affected by the retirement system, to hear, you know, the concerns that were expressed. So, say if you have any questions at all about it, that you aggressively want to know lots more about it than I do, but I think they're always forward with water, street, gas, and the resolution. I appreciate you if you all consider this resolution.
Are there any questions? Do you have anything you would like to say? If there's not, then we'll put it on next week's agenda. Go to item number three, discuss demolition of our house at Norfusian Street, Maple Street, Mayor.
I will say, that's the first time I've ever seen Mr. speak, so I will say that. It's the first, I'll tell you why we'll go on. You have been in your packet a, about a month ago, we put out for bid the demolition of the building that the city owns that is caddying to the railroad depot. I mean, the purpose was to see how much it would cost to demolish that building. We got two estimates back. I don't really wanna talk about the price just yet, in case you decide not to and you have to do something different. But you see, they are two significantly, significantly different prices in a wide range. It was for the removal and disposal of a 35,000 square foot structure. After the building is removed, the site would be graded to a uniform round surface with an 8-inch clean topsoil, seeded in mulch to give permanent vegetation. Once that building is down, the city can do whatever, if they need additional parking for the depot, then it'll be a bit spot hard. But the building is getting to be in disrepair, it's, has lots of problems. And so, again, you see the two estimates there. On the low bid, the contractor had wrote on the app, written on the outside of the envelope, add $10,000 to the bid. But speaking with Mr. Kenner, and he can correct me, I don't believe that's allowed, that the bond, or that the bid documents say that you have to put your bid on the bid sheet. Is that correct?
They have to be placed on paper that we get provided.
So, that's not, that $10,000, I'll take it into consideration. You see the number there. And then they have 50 working days to complete the project. So, I spoke with Mr. Wheeler, you see the amount there on the low bid. I asked him whether he could rather conclude that in a budget amendment for this year or put it in the budget for next year, since we're so close. And his, his idea or his preference is to put it into a budget amendment. So, I wanted to get the information to you all. Do have a good opportunity, I think, to get it, as you see, the wide range of prices that probably wouldn't, that wouldn't happen again if we had to rebid it at a time down the road. So, just like me to consider that.
Are there any discussion on that?
He, the contractor would be able to start around, he thought, by the first of November, so...
Any discussion? That's the Scottsboro House, that would be correct.
The Harris family, I believe, is who donated that. Is that right, Mr. Kenner?
That is correct.
Any suggestions, we'll put it on next week's agenda. Go to item number four. Discuss resolution surplus Recreation Department property. Meeting, please.
The Recreation Department has certain items which are no longer needed. They would like to surplus a 1995 Ford F-150 pickup. The last digits of the VIN are 17479. They would like to place this on good deals with the money being put back into their capital asset account.
Thank you. Put it down on next week's agenda. Anyone having any suggestions? We've got number five, announced late December, water, sewer, and gas board. Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Ray Henshaw's position on the water, sewer, and gas board has expired. This is a six-year term. Anyone interested should apply on writing to the city clerk's office by Tuesday, September 20th, 2016.
Delegations, Brenda? Bill reports, Mayor.
I have a couple of things. About two to three years ago, Mr. Kenner and I began to approach charter about the property that they own on South Houston Street. It really has an interest off of South Houston Street, it's not an interest off of Laurel Street, which directly across from the, well, not directly, but near the Heritage Center property. It's the old couple of coves out there. And we asked them to donate it, and then after just some back and forth, they have agreed to basically lease us that property for zero amount per year for 10 years, with options, you know, thereafter. They felt like that was the easier, better way for them. If they did wanna sell it, we would have a first usual. There's no hazardous materials contamination with it in the lease. And it could be used for the Heritage Center for overflow parking after their construction. We were able to make, we can make any operations, additions, or improvements as we want. So, that was, we appreciate charter agreeing to do that for us. On September the 19th, Ridgedale Road, the construction will begin up there. The road will be closed on the Sojo's end, where the bridge culvert is that will be replaced. And it will be, that end will be closed down probably till the first of November, or somewhere thereabouts. So, they'll, you can't access Ridgedale through that end, you'd have to go through people, a lot can go around. They will be working on the road during that whole time while they're replacing the culvert. It's a $1.2 million project, an atrio project, which will be to repair and repave the road, drainage work. And hopefully, that project will be completed hopefully by the end of the year. The Downtown Renovation Committee will meet next Monday at 2:00 PM. Also, the engineers, CDG, will be here to present to the council that plan next Monday night. Originally, you know, it was a work session, so we gotta come in that night. But since they had the other meeting for that next Monday afternoon, they will be here next Monday night to go over that project on the 90% plans. Also, on September the 26th, or 29th, here at City Hall at 4 o'clock, there'll be a public meeting for the general public, the public forum to come and view the plans and ask questions on September the 29th. Lastly, in your packet, you have a copy of an attorney general's opinion. About two months ago, I read to you the opinion, or told you, informed you about the opinion that the county commission had received saying they no longer had to pay corporate shares tax. So, on July 26th, another attorney general opinion came out, and where the question was asked by Ronald Jones, who's the department, chief examiner of the Department of Public Accounts, said, should all agencies or funds that receive a portion of the old shares tax proceeds in 1999 receive a portion of proceeds from the Alabama Business Privilege Corporate Shares Tax? And if you go all the way to the back page, then it says the county and all tax recipient agencies, which would include us, or funds, or funds that previously received a portion of the old shares tax are entitled to receive the tax proceeds. So, that means now we're gonna get it back, apparently. We had been receiving anywhere from $127,000 to $140,000 per year. And we had not been paid for the previous two years. And then it comes due, and we were typically paid in September. So, we are really owed three years' worth of that tax, which could be anywhere from $381,000 to $420,000. Mr. Kenner, I don't, I know you contacted the city attorney, or county attorney, I don't know if he's heard back. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. The attorney general has reversed his opinion and says now that we are entitled to that tax, of which is three years now in arrears. That's all I have.
Mr. Wong?
Just like everybody, from there.
Mr. Smith? Gary Stewart?
Thank you all for meeting.
Brent Miller?
I'd just like, Mayor, if you could give us an update on Quarter Road and Wisco Road. I know that's near completion here tonight or at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, I can do it now, it's okay. They aren't finished, Josh, they haven't done the final inspection yet. That's the only thing you're lacking, is the final inspection, I know it's been strapped. As far as I know, the signs are up, the truck. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller, so you're, see the?
No truck, sir.
No truck sign, but the spigot signs are up, if you notice? Okay. So, all the signage is not completed, but the shopping, everything, except the final, final inspection is all.
And can we get the account on working days charged?
We got that, Josh.
And what can all these would be assessed?
He can have that for you for next week.
Is this slated to be completed in April?
Well, it is, it's working days, it's not calendar day, so, you know.
Yeah, but still think that...
But that, but that's a determination made on State of Alabama, not us, correct?
Okay.
But when you get that from?
Okay, thank you. And then the only other thing I had was, there was a great turnout at March Sunday this past weekend. It was covered up as well as by, I guess, the Square or First Monday and the Cruze Inn. Got a little too much lemonade, a little too much fudge at March Sunday, but other than that, it was great crowd up there, I thought I had.
I had a couple of things. The piece of the EviConne Bridge was new last Thursday evening, and I would like to thank the community of Trucking and that crew for getting that done. Ralph, the police department, the escort, what's that road doing, Ralph?
County Road 33.
County Road 33, to the city. Eddie helped with that as well, so I wanna thank everybody who participated in getting that done. It was nice, something that didn't just load up like a truck and haul it, there was a lot to it. So, I wanna thank them, the police for making sure that nothing bad. The other thing, with our Sunday, I wanna thank Eddie and his crew for getting all that thing down there, they look really good. I was down there real early, and it was, it was really busy, and I know driving around Square is packed, packed as well, so I wanna thank everyone who participated with that, and it brought a lot of people from outside the city out here. Rick, can you get with all the council and schedule the budget meetings with them?
Another thing, the Veterans Field, I see a lot of progress, and I wanna thank Jim and Christine for working on that together. The meeting that I was in the other day was the most productive meeting in, I've been with, partner, so I think there's only good things to turn out and go move forward, and looking forward to more progress, and I wanna thank you, Christine and Jim, for making part of that. So, I'm tired of hearing all the negativity and everything else, we just need to move forward with it. And I see, I actually see light at the end of the tunnel, so. And I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, and see some places out here we haven't seen in a while, so, and with that, we'll adjourn, thank y'all.